Okay, I can see you now.
All right, great. We're all set. Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, March 26th. This is a regularly scheduled and noticed meeting of the Gothstown Planning Board. We have a few items to address here. Before we begin, I'm going to ask everybody to identify themselves. We are conducting this meeting a little differently than normal pursuant to the emergency orders that are in effect in the state for the current virus crisis. We have members on the line that are calling in and we have members present so that we do have a quorum. We have changed the setup of the room to try and keep people away from each other. And the applicants have also agreed to come into the meeting one at a time to ensure that we have space and that if members of the public do want to appear, we have plenty of room for everyone. You should see on your screen a number to call in. We will be taking public comment in conjunction with our applications tonight. If you call in, you will be muted until the time for public comment, at which point we will be asking for anybody who has called in and wants to comment on something that we're addressing to then speak. Before we start all of this, I want to thank everybody for their patience. This is a new process for us and I particularly want to thank the board members who are here tonight and board members who are participating by phone. They will be observing the meeting on GTV-16 and they are also on the phone so they can hear what's going on. So now that we've started, why don't we start with who's here? David?
David Pierce, I'm an alternate member.
Gail LeBruck, alternate member and recording secretary.
My name is Barbara Griffin.
Peter Georgantis, selectman's rep.
And then Kim?
Kimberly Pease.
Phil.
Philip DeVanzo.
Thank you. And also with us on the phone is our town engineer, Sarah?
Yes, here.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're here. All right. The other thing that will be slightly different for tonight's meeting is-
Also Joanne.
Oh, that's right. And also on the phone is our town planner, Joanne, are you there?
Yes, hi, everyone.
All right. For purposes of votes tonight, there will be a roll call vote, which means every member has to vote and be recorded separately because they are not all present in the room. And the first item that we have on our agenda is the minutes of March 12th, 2020 with the proposed amendment by Kimberly Pease. Board members, you should have received Kimberly's catch of a word that needed to be changed in the minutes. And do I have a motion on the minutes? I would accept a motion with Kimberly's amendment.
A motion to accept the minutes from the 12th of March, changing the word on page 16 from ephemeral to ephemeral.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. And for purposes of this meeting, both David and Gail, who are alternates, will be voting members. Is there any further discussion from anyone on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Pete?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
As seen, I wasn't there.
And Phil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. The next item that we have is an item for a recommendation for comments to the ZBA for Easy Car Wash. This is a facility that's proposed to be located at 186 Mast Road. The property is CIFZ. We have board members, we have the actual information on the project and an email from our zoning code enforcement officer. This property is located at Mast Road across from a couple of the car dealerships on the lots that are generally, I think, the other business that you might know as the Wicked Hair Salon is along this strip where this property is proposed, this development is proposed to go. Joanne, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I did receive an email from Nancy late this afternoon regarding the frontage issue. She's been working with Jason from TF Moran to try to come to a conclusion as to whether this property has frontage. And Nancy's been doing a great deal of research in the files from going back to like 1986. And she feels that she still hasn't received a solid answer from the applicant as to whether or not this may need a variance or approval by the Select Board. So they're basically here tonight just to, for the board to send comments to the ZBA. They're also going to the ZBA for a special exception because in this particular zone, the CIFZ zone, car washes are permitted by special exception. So they need to get the approval for that special exception from the ZBA. And then, of course, if all of those variances are approved, there's three others that pertain to frontage, which may or may not be needed depending on what Jason and Nancy come up with. They'll be back to your board with an actual site plan.
So this is before our board, in accordance with our internal procedures, that we provide comments of a planning nature, not really specific as to the business or what might be addressed in the approval of a site plan-
Exactly.
-for the zoning to consider in regards to their need to address the requests by the applicant to have variations from our zoning ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
For those who've been around for a while, probably remember that this property once had an old, I think it was a white farmhouse-
Yeah, it was.
...on many years and then there was a fire and eventually it was torn down.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions before we hear from the applicant? I'm hearing, I'm hearing none, so at this point, welcome Jason.
Thank you, folks. Jason Hill from TF Moran. I do appreciate the opportunity to present tonight with everything that's going on. We very much are appreciative of the time to keep things moving along as much as possible. We'll just, you know, staying safe and all that, so thank you very much. I do have a slightly different, it's a slightly modified plan from the zoning board plan that was submitted. I don't know if you have a copy of the plan in your packages?
We were given-
I have handouts of it, it's-
I mean, this is sort of for general, if you have something more updated-
The only difference in the plan, which I can hand out, is that there's a proposed manual service bay as well as the tunnel itself. We're proposing to have a two-bay, like, manual service station, so that would be an additional component. It's still a car wash, but instead of having a singular tunnel with the only car wash.
I'm not sure we got that, Jason.
No, it's recently-
The plan that they have in their packet is dated February 17th.
That's the plan that you have in your packet?
Right.
Yes. It has a singular tunnel and the vacuum stations on the east side of the project. This is where the Mike's Auto, the car repair shop is. And we've recently made some, the only modifications, the plan that we're looking to make would be to add this two-station, it's a manual service area, so instead of going through the automatic car wash, the users would have the option to just get out of their vehicle and do it by themselves, by hand. There's no change in the proposed use other than this, this, it's not even an accessory type use, it's just an additional service that they're looking to provide, okay? Just, and I have handouts, I can pass them-
That's all right, I mean, we're not really here to approve the site plan, so-
I just wanted to bring you up to speed. Yep. I wanted to bring you up to speed on that. So briefly describe the zoning and the vicinity and all that that we're looking to develop. This is a 13-acre parcel that's currently vacant. And the interesting thing that, about it, that we've, that Joanne had mentioned that we're working through with Nancy is that there was a, where the rail trail currently exists, which is right here, there's the strip of land right here between our site and the Mast Road. That was originally, in doing our research, we found that that was deeded as an easement and conveyed as an easement in the 80s.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
If GTV has the ability to zoom in a little bit on that easel, because you can't really see, it's just a kind of a fuzzy thing at this point, yeah, that's, that's getting better. If they can go a little bit further, yeah, that's much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
So specifically, there's a plan number 19883, which is recorded at the registry, showing the property having, the property having its frontage on Mast Road with a right-of-way for the railroad that's running parallel in this, in this vicinity. More recently, the, in 87, I think it was 87-
The right-of-way over?
The railroad sold the parcel to the town and there was actually, there's a, now there's a property map, tax map and lot that was conveyed to the town of Gothstown.
Excuse me?
All right, okay. I, before we get into this-
That's kind of the background of-
Right. This is, this is part of the rail trail regard, and we have an ongoing issue as to the frontage for the lot, correct? So that's an issue that you're dealing with, Nancy?
It's one of the variances that we'll need is a variance just to develop this parcel with having no frontage off of Mast Road, having access, there's an existing easement, there's an existing permanent access and utility easement that was conveyed-
In 87?
Yes, from the railroad to this property, the subject tract-
To give you the access.
For the access, permanent access, rights of repair and all that nature. So just kind of the evolution of the way we feel that the railroad had handled its authority through the sale of the parcel to the town had evolved, that's where we're thinking it evolved from originally becoming an easement to actually becoming a property. That's something our surveyors are-
Right, I, okay. I understand and we're, we're going to have a limited discussion on the easement because that's not, we're not here approving the plan.
Then I'll focus more on the use.
Right. So why don't we focus a little bit on the use and then David will speak. David, I'm sure will want to speak to the easement and the issues there in regards to it, but I think for purposes of what the zoning board might be looking for us from is this is a parcel that we at one point recommended, CIFZ.
Yes.
So this is allowed by a special exception, so if you could sort of address the use in the context of where this lot is and how you think it might work in conjunction with what general planning issues we might have and if board members after we hear from Jason could then sort of address those type of questions and then we'll get to the access easement issue.
So this, thank you. This is a, like I said, the commercial industrial flex zone, which is a newly established zoning district, which I know the town is looking to maximize its commercial land. This use is required or permitted by a special exception and it's consistent with, there is a gas station, I believe it's a Shell or a Sunoco gas station, it's approximately a half, half a mile towards the village that also has a drive-through-
Yes.
-tunnel and vacuum boom station, which is similar to what we're proposing, which looks like, this is some schematic information of a system that we'd be looking to implement for the car wash itself, the tunnel system with the vacuum boom stations, which I believe it's the Sunoco station-
Yeah, they have that.
Right, right, the Shell station right down the street. So we anticipate something like this with a manual service, with two manual service bays. Excuse me. In terms of the site itself, we would then be, since the site is too large to have just a small commercial pad site, you know, for this car wash, we'd be subdividing this and the remaining acreage would just be sold to, you know, so this would involve a subdivision as well. Roughly, this would be approximately a two-acre site, probably a little smaller than two acres. The facility is comprised of just the car wash station and there's a very few employees. We do have some traffic, although the car wash, unless you have a real, like a warm winter's day or something, we don't anticipate that the traffic will be significant from this development. The road itself, I believe, in front of the site is just a two-lane highway, one way west, one way eastbound, so we're going to, we don't anticipate at this point any mitigation requirements for traffic, but however, we need to do the scoping session with the DOT and we'll have to do, we will be doing a traffic study before we come before you to the planning board to, to address any traffic conditions. But at this point, we've had preliminary meeting with the DOT regarding this use in a similar location in Gothstown and there was consensus that there was not a huge concern about the peak generation and traffic and then having, creating a lot of fringe issues, although we know the highway's pretty busy, particularly in the PM, week, weekday condition.
Not lately.
Yeah. But we feel that the busiest days that we'll have would be like a winter's day, a warm winter day when everyone's out washing their vehicles. This will process, I don't believe, I think the capacity, I can provide information on how much process, the out throughput of this.
Yeah, I don't think that's for this discussion.
But that's really, we have plenty of queuing and circulation on our site plan because we can control, we can control the site since we have 20 acre, excuse me, 13 acres to work with. It's allowed us to set the property back from Mast Road a great distance, 100 feet from, from Mast Road. And then we have adequate buffering, more than the minimum of 10 feet, five to 10 feet on the side buffer, we're providing 25 feet on the side buffer and then to the back, there's nothing. So this is somewhat set away from the, you know, the abutting uses and such, more than what would be minimumly required.
Is the butter aware of this application? Have you spoken with her?
I have.
Okay, all right. I just wondered, because this is not, this is not a noticed hearing, so-
I've requested it, or I urge them to watch this evening. The butter he's speaking of.
Okay.
And that would be, yeah, we haven't spoken with either the Mike's Auto or I guess the opposing properties, which would be the salon and there's another auto-
Right, which would all be noticed when we have our hearings.
Yep.
Okay.
So, you know, other things like drainage, we're going to do task pitting and all that, we'll figure that out.
Right, but what we're talking about is, is locating a car wash in a section of Mast Road that's less than, that's where there's a car wash, you know, in less than a mile away and there are-
Yes.
-car dealerships and businesses across the street.
It's, it's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of the general usage patterns, so it shouldn't, by that matter, I don't think it's going to alter the character, essential character or any of that, those aspects. I think it'll obviously be good because it'll benefit by, you know, bringing in other commercial property to, you know, we know about the desire for the town to maximize its uses of the commercial property. This is a good use, it'll generate the taxable revenue, it's not going to load the schools, obviously, it'll pay its, you know, any impact fees towards the development and it's a good use.
All right, let me-
The circulation will be a one-way circulation pattern.
All right, thank you, Jason. Let me ask, do any of, on the line here, Kimberly or Phil, do we, either one of you have any comments on this as to the proposed use?
No, not as, not as, not as the use.
All right.
I do not.
Okay. Anybody here at the table have any comments as to the proposed use?
No, I don't.
Okay. I mean, I, I am understanding, board members, that no comments equates to a message to the zoning board that, given the category of, of car washes as a special exception and commercial industrial flex zone, that this is a use that was anticipated that might be appropriate for this district and given the surrounding development seems to be in an appropriate location. Is that a fair summary of everybody's opinion?
Of mine, yes, of mine.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Pete?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
David?
I concur with the chair.
Okay. I, I just know that the ZBA needs to get something from us as to that and we're trying to limit this to the planning issues. Joanne, I would like to hear from you in regards to the issue of this is also really a subdivision request and the process that should be followed from a timeline and application standpoint.
So when the application, I'm, I'm to understand that when the application goes through the zoning process and then eventually comes to us, the application will consist of the site plan for the car wash as well as a subdivision of one other lot, so it would be a two-lot subdivision of the 13 acres.
So-
And they would, there would be additional, possibly additional, an additional access point off of 114 for the additional lot. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason.
We are proposing to have a shared driveway via-
Now you're back to the shared, okay. So there'll be one shared driveway.
It'd be a cross-access easement, just to benefit, in this vicinity, to benefit the car wash. It'll have a cross-access easement to the, the shared easement, which crosses the rail trail.
All right, but for purposes, for looking at us, we don't see any, I, I guess I'm trying, does anybody see any issues with this turning into also a subdivision request when it comes back to us, if it comes back to us, if he gets the zoning board approvals? Pete?
No, I'm fine with it.
David?
No, it's, to me-
Kimberly?
To me, it's the proper use of land, you want to develop the rest of the land.
All right. Kimberly, you okay with this?
No, I think it's fine.
And Phil?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
All right, sorry, I can't see nodding heads, which I can when everybody's together, so we've got to sort of go through this drill and I want to make sure the zoning board gets clear, something clear from us. All right. Pete?
Just one question. You're leaving 11 acres left, is that true?
11 or 12, yeah.
So is there any plans in the future to subdivide that, that you know? I'm just curious with the driveway situation, if it's going to keep going like this?
We don't know who would own the property at this point. It's going to be sold to a separate entity and will not be retained by the same entity. It's my understanding that develops the car wash, it'll be two different entities. So my answer, I guess, is no, there's no plans yet. We would, it would have that property, the remaining property would still have access via this easement, so if there was a future subdivision, we would need to create further easements, unless we wanted to get another railroad crossing, unless we want to negotiate an easement with the town to cross the rail trail again, which I would think the town would want to minimize the amount of crossings. This does a good job.
All right, well, now that we're talking about crossings-
It is, it is a state highway and the, the two entrances off State Highway on the same parcel might have difficulty at DOT.
That's another point, yes. So right now, would, the plan would be to use, would create a shared driveway for these two parcels and-
All right. Assuming that the frontage issue gets resolved, what comments might planning board members have in regards to the access and the rail trail? David?
For access, Jason, once you cross the rail corridor, you show a T intersection. Did you consider a straight-through intersection to service the rest of the parcel for future development?
Yeah, we, we have looked at that. However, we want to, this area is planned on being used for a drainage facility, so there would be a drainage pond in this area, so I could, as we go through the planning phase, I could fine-tune that and see if, if it's a better design to appro, to go with a, at least allow for a T or a cross, a four-way intersection and not, not only limit people to having to turn right, you know, so I could basically do something like this and have the ability to go this way and this way on that future parcel. We can look at that.
Okay, David, as to the issues with the access and the easement?
Yes. The easement across the former rail corridor, that is, the town is aware of that. The town has a survey plat 35888, which shows that easement on it. So, and that, that was a survey that the town hired to be done and so, and that easement, that right-of-way over the rail corridor is shown on-
That would be the proven and lower plan, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah.
35888. From, I have a lot of knowledge on that particular area and, and one thing I have is there's a unkept growth of trees and bushes that are on town land that effectively shield this property from Mast Road, except for what your driveway entrance would be and-
Yeah, they're located-
Yes, all through there. And, you know, there, there could be some consideration if the developing, for developing that parcel, if you wanted to do some landscaping, you need to talk to the-
In the right, in the right-of-way or-
Yes, yes, because it is-
The screening the rail-
It is the butter's land and you can't touch any of those trees or bushes, but maybe if you talk to the park department and the town-
Well, I think that the issue is framed more from a visibility standpoint in regards to traffic and the rail trail at that point, because if you, right now, the screening is not an issue because there's nothing else going on back there from a rail trail perspective. So there might want to be some consideration of what makes it the safest for the rail trail usage. So, there might wanna be some consideration of what makes it the safest for the rail trail usage in light of the fact that now there's stuff there.
The brush would prevent, uh, line of sight for vehicles entering and exiting and bicyclists zooming along.
Right now, they just have to deal with each other, but...
And then the crossing itself is something like, we could use like a crosswalk condition or, I mean, a lot of the properties have looked at, there's no demarcate, not in a lot, I've seen several properties on the aerial mapping where there's no pathway, it just crosses through the corner of the parking lot, there's many properties where there's...
Well, but that depends what you're looking about, technically speaking, the rail trail, for example, goes behind the Shell Station, rather than across the front of it, which is what everybody does, or most people do. So, knowing that, I think, just so you're aware, I think the planning board would have concerns about making sure that that traffic going over any access point is appropriately noticed for cars and vice versa for bicycles or walkers. Um, I do think there were certain provisions done on the Mill Street Plan in that regards. I can't remember specifically what they were, but I think that's why when you look at various locations for the rail trail, you may not see consistently...
Yeah, same treatment, yeah.
This particular section of the rail corridor, uh, was, uh, planned to be constructed last summer. And, uh, Jason, I'm the, uh, project engineer for building the rail corridor, so, um, I had engine, I had engineering plans of, uh, horizontal location and vertical elevation of the trail.
For the design?
From, from the abutter's property on the east all the way for six hundred feet and I'll be glad to share those with you. It shows the horizontal location and the vertical elevation of the future trail.
Yeah, that would be important, thank you.
From an access standpoint, do any board members feel a need to comment to the ZBA? Anybody present in the room, David?
I'm, uh, I'm in favor of the development of that property and, uh, I would, uh, hope that the ZBA grants the variances to allow...
Well, I don't, we're not taking a position on what the ZBA should or should not do. We're, we're making a comment based on the planning.
We have no comment.
So I think the issue is as to the traffic, I'm not seeing anything in regards to the easement from a planning perspective that I don't think Jason can't address with plans for the site in front of the planning board. Peter?
I'm good with it, I think, you know, it sounds like we got everything covered and I, you know, I don't know if we have to physically say yes, we are for it, but...
I don't think we have any...
I don't think, I don't see any issues.
We don't have any non-comment, we don't think... Kimberly, where are you on the access?
I'm all set, I think it's fine.
Phil?
Yeah, no, not a problem, not a problem at all.
Okay.
I have one planning comment that I'd like Jason to know about. On the east boundary of this, uh, one-acre parcel, um, you show some bushes sketched in there next to the bound, yes. Much of that boundary line has a man-made berm that's on, that's on the, that's on the, yes, it's on the west side of the boundary line. And that berm, uh, serves to keep water from flowing over the boundary line, yes.
Yeah, there's a shallow, the gondola line shows like a shallow area coming through like this.
I'm aware of a considerable amount of water flowing off the upper, uh, elevations, uh, to the rear of this parcel and flowing through the parcel, uh, getting to various culverts that are on the rail trail area. So I just wanna draw to your attention that, uh, there's considerable stormwater flow that should be, uh, examined carefully.
All right, I think that encompasses, um, the planning board's consideration of comments to go to the ZBA. Does any other planning board member have any comment on anything so far?
No comment.
No.
Okay, all right, um, I can't, do any board members recall whether we actually do a motion on this or we have an understanding and Gail will do a memo to herself?
I can do a memo.
Joanne, do you recall whether we actually took a vote on this the last time we did it or did we just send it over?
Yes, the last few times you took a vote and then I sent a memo to the, to the ZBA.
All right, so, it's, so, I'm looking for a motion in accordance...
I'll make a motion that we have no comment to the ZBA.
As to the access and that the use we see as appropriate?
Right.
Okay. And that's been seconded by Phil, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Pete?
Yes.
David?
I agree.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you very much.
Thank you folks for your time, appreciate that.
Joanne, if you could do that memo, that would be great.
Thank you.
The next application before us tonight is an item of old business, this is map six, lot one. It's a site plan review application for a proposal to build an eighty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-square-foot commercial indoor recreational field, um, it is New Hampshire Sports Dome, Monahan Family LLC and NHSD Holdings LLC. The applicant is at three seventy-six Goffstown Back Road Tower Lane. Um, this application has already been accepted as complete and has been continued since March sixth. I understood that Nick was here, the paperwork I have does not have a number for Nick. Joanne, do you know whether Nick is here or not?
Yes, it, but there should wait, there should be of his, uh, cell phone number on that list.
Derek has it, he's gonna give him a call, oh, I see it, I'm sorry, I'm looking at...
Three, four, yeah, it's...
He's here!
Been watching you guys out there.
Oh, all right, okay, all right, and I'm here with my Lysol, Nick, to wipe this down. 'Cause who knows what Jason brought in with him?
Hey, you, I don't, I work with him and I don't disagree.
Ow!
Oh, no, I, I like, he's a, he's a very good engineer.
All right, thank you, you are welcome, thank you for coming.
Nice job, Barbara.
Thank you.
Barbara, this is Kimberly, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say to the audience that I am also watching you on YouTube under Goffstown TV, so if anyone at home doesn't have access to cable, you can also watch it via YouTube.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Yeah, uh, Barbara?
Yes.
Uh, just so that, uh, you're aware, I can hear you fine, I can hear Kimberly, I can hear Peter. I have a little difficulty with the applicant and I have a little difficulty with, uh, David. I can hear Joanne fine.
All right, they're gonna check, it's...
I'll make sure I project. Can I slide this table back, I'm just gonna move it a little bit more center. I turned the volume all the way up on the conference room.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience, we're sort of working the kinks out of this kind of electronically serviced meetings. All right, we have heard this application before, um, we have a presentation, we will open a public hearing for comment and address any issues, we will need to deal with waivers and conditional use permits with this application. Joanne, could you bring us up to date as to where we were and where we are today?
Yes, so, the last time, uh, Nick came in and appeared before the board was two weeks ago. And there were just a few minor things that he needed to adjust and, uh, he said he would get us the plans in time, which he did, um, we've all reviewed them and the outstanding comments or the, the answers to the outstanding comments are noted in bold on your staff report. So, the first one down under overview, the very last sentence, it was recommended that the applicant provide the board with an update regarding the removal of trees along Goffstown Back Road. And that discussion had to do with whether those trees were located in Manchester or Gofftown. So I'm not sure what Nick has found out about that, but...
Do you want me to answer these as you go, Joanne?
Purposes of moving along, if that's okay, Joanne, let's just address them as we go along.
Sure.
That's easier, okay.
So we did verify they are in Manchester and we are pursuing that with the city of Manchester to have them removed. The, uh, abutting owner has no issue, they'd actually prefer to see those trees removed, so it's something the project team's gonna work with the city of Manchester to get those trees removed.
Phil, could you hear Nick?
Uh, yeah, I can hear him a little bit better. If I have a problem hearing him as we go on, I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, thank you, parking, Joanne?
The next one is under comments from the traffic report from, uh, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. One of the things that they had suggested was that bicycle parking area be shown, which is now included on the plan. Uh, number seven was, uh, a recommendation for drop-off area, which has been added to the plan set. And the applicant followed up with Southern New Hampshire and they discussed these items, uh, over the phone. So, like, we're all set with what those, what they were recommending and how the applicant has addressed them.
All right, and we previously found that this, we found that this had regional impact and Manchester was actually present at the presentation two weeks ago. Have we heard anything further in regards to any concerns from Manchester?
No, we have not heard anything since the, the meeting two weeks ago.
Okay, and they are, I will just note for the record that they are not present. Do we have anybody that's called in from the public on this at this point, Derek?
The, we have, uh, the only people on the line are, there are two, uh, non-board members and non-staff online who could speak up now if you want me to, in the opportunity.
All right, um, we'll deal with that in the, in the public hearing, but we haven't, nobody directly involved with the plan has heard from Manchester, okay, thank you.
The next one is the waiver, um, they had asked for a waiver for the, the trees and there was a note that was supposed to be added to the plan stating that all trees that do not survive will be replaced for the life of this project. Um, the waiver was not acted upon, it was only accepted, it was only addressed for acceptance only, so that still needs to be reviewed and voted on one way or another.
All right, before we move on, Nick, where do we stand on trees?
We, the owner took no exception to that requirement.
Okay, um, so, in regards to the note, there's no requirement. You went through with us last time the issue of fourteen versus nineteen trees in regards to their location and what was the practicality of the screening that you were trying to provide. Why don't you go through just for purposes of, um, plan review, where the plantings are that you're proposing to do?
Understood. So, relative to the waiver that's being requested, um, we are proposing fourteen trees where nineteen are required. Um, you can see where those shade trees are located along our frontage. The portion in which they are not proposed is really this back portion closest to the cul-de-sac. You can see there's an existing tree grove located directly opposite the access drive. Um, this is an area that's either wetlands or wetlands buffer, which would preclude the ability from immediately removing those trees without some sort of other approval. Given this location, they don't provide a substantial benefit. Relative to the design of the, the overall site, it's a diverse cross-section of trees that are being provided currently. We have thirty trees that are proposed and a hundred and eighty-six shrubs. You know, relative to the trees, we're talking Norway spruce, blue spruce, American elm, scarlet oak, red maple. So these are, these are substantial trees that are being planted. The reason why we're not showing them in the back here, again, this is a steep slope that leads down to the drainage swale. They don't provide a screening effect. Having additional trees in closer proximity, uh, to the air-inflated structure is not desirable and being that it doesn't provide a public purpose, we have not provided them and are asking a waiver, or I should say, or a partial waiver, to not provide those trees along that one easterly section of the sports dome.
Okay, I would prefer, just because we've got sort of members on the phone and here, that we address issues, um, as they come up. However, I think these need to be subject to public comment, so we'll come back to actually, um, addressing the waiver. I'll point out to the board members that the requirements for the waiver are in our development regs in the version I have, page forty, all right, um...
Let me just point out one thing, um, just so that you know, in the right-hand corner where the, there's a, you know, a dark cluster of trees, that is on the property owned by the self-storage facility. It's not on, um, this property. I don't have a problem with the waiver, but I just want the board to, to know that.
That the, that the, Nick, that the stuff you're talking about is on a different lot, right?
So the existing tree screen, that, the existing tree screen is located on the, on the adjacent lot, correct. This is the property line right here, which is very tight to the roadway. So again, providing trees along this small section, we're asking for that relief because there's no public benefit.
Okay, um, and you're also asking for some conditional use permits?
We are, now, what we did at the last meeting, if I can speak to this, is we had narratized for you and said, all right, this is why these conditional use permits make sense, this is how we met these requirements. Uh, we were kindly asked to go back and just recraft our request so that it could be read line by line. I believe there is, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six criteria for a conditional use permit. So I do have those kinda copied, pasted into a, uh, appropriate order and I'd be happy to read those into the record if that would be appropriate at this time.
I think it would be.
All right, very good. Relative to what we had prepared for this evening, I just wanted to, to make sure I spoke to that first. We are planning to address the conditional use permits, the waivers. We had a very lengthy discussion on site lines and the other components of the structure. We're happy to reiterate any component of that, or otherwise, though, we're gonna stick to really those three items that we're asked to come back for, which is the two conditional use permits in the waiver. So if there's components that, um, the chair or others would like to hear or hear again, um, please just ask and I'll make sure that I reiterate those.
Before you start, Sarah, um, our town engineer is on the line. Sarah, you just heard Nick, um, present, sort of go through the waiver and the conditional use permits, which are sort of more of a planning issue, and presented that he wanted to deal with the site lines and I think something else, are you...
If, if we need to, you know, we, we had, we spoke on it at length at the last meeting and I think there was an overall comfort.
We need to hear from our engineer that those at-length discussions were successful.
Very good.
Sarah?
Yes, um, we haven't had any sightline issues with that intersection that I know of, um...
Okay, different question.
So what are, what are there any engineer, any issues with the engineering of this site as it exists?
The only, the only real outstanding, um, issue that we have, um, I sent it over to Nick today when I got it, um, it's just the review of the retaining wall. We just got our estimate from a party engineer, so that will have to still be reviewed.
Okay, and, and that was actually mentioned, as I recall, at the last meeting in regards to the issue of the retaining wall. So that, Joanne, am I correct, that that would need to be added to the conditions?
Yes.
We're live.
Okay.
Typically, um, the change, changes to the actual design of the retaining wall don't really require substantial changes to the plan. So I think that, um, the approval of the retaining wall design could be a condition of approval. We would just get that before the plans are signed.
So, DPW, administrative approval of the wall, okay. I don't have Tim here writing down all the, the conditions, so we're trying to...
Doing that, sorry.
All right, um, so, Nick, you have done the, the criteria for the, um, conditional use and I think I sort of went off track with you for a minute, so what did you wanna address next?
Okay, um, we'll take up the conditional use questionnaire as it deals with the table four point three, which is the building footprint?
Right, thank you.
All right, um, I won't read back over the general description of the project, um, but I will note that the need for a footprint in excess of fifty thousand square feet for the air-supported structure is a function of the full-size turf field which it encloses. And as such, a smaller footprint cannot be provided while also providing a regulation soccer field. So the reason why our air-supported structure is as big as it is, uh, it needs to be that size in order for us to have a full-size soccer field, which is the intent of the project. So the applicant is requesting the planning board consider the following conditional use permit to allow a structure footprint of approximately eighty-one thousand five hundred square feet, uh, which is the eighty thousand five hundred square-foot indoor sports field and an approximate one thousand square-foot connected support structure in the industrial district. First criteria, the use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as a conditional use. A building footprint in excess of fifty thousand square feet in the industrial district is specifically authorized by a conditional use permit as listed in section four point three, Table of Dimensional Regulations, sub-note five of the ordinance. Next criteria, if completed as proposed by the applicant... the Ordinance. Next criteria, if completed as proposed by the applicant, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of this article and with specific conditions or standards established in this ordinance for the particular use. Few line items, as a result of the zoning board of adjustment meeting held on December 3, 2019, the board voted 5 to 0 to grant an application for a variance to allow a commercial indoor recreational facility restricted to athletic use only, an indoor sports field in the industrial district. And as a result of the zoning board of adjustment meeting held on January 7, 2020, the board voted 5 to 0 to grant an application for a variance to allow maximum building height of 75 feet, or 45-foot height is the maximum permitted, specifically for an air-supported structure. With variance, variance is approved for height and use, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of this applicable section and with the specific conditions and standards established in the ordinance for the proposed use. Next criteria, the use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or abutting uses in the area in which it is to be located. Through their diligent evaluation of the application, the zoning board identified the important views they felt were important to the town consistent with the ordinance. One, the sightline evaluated from the nearest residential property. Two, traveling east on Gostown Back Road. Both show the visibility of the structure is mitigated by a proposed supplemental landscape burn with evergreen plantings. The third area of interest was the sightline traveling west on Gostown Back Road. Into Gostown from Manchester was also evaluated, showing the anticipated view after the initial build-out, as well as 20 years after. The zoning board determined the available sightlines to the structure to be acceptable for the neighborhood and compatible with the adjoining, abutting uses, which consist of residential and commercial uses, such as self-storage, a gas station and convenience store, fast-food restaurant, youth daycare, and an adjacent religious place of worship, as well as the commercial towers. So, that same presentation that was provided to the zoning board was also provided here to the planning board two weeks ago. Use will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety. As part of the site plan preparation, we've prepared a traffic impact and access study, which concludes the project traffic can be safely accommodated by the adjacent roadway network without the need for traffic mitigation measures. Next criteria, the use will not have a substantial adverse impact of the appearance and visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood. This is a little similar to one of our previous questions, in that the case was made to the zoning board for the proposed height and appearance of the structure. We prepared sightline sections, plans, and renderings, including a photo key sheet for the pertinent sightlines from the surrounding area, which, again, was also provided to the planning board and reviewed at the board meeting two weeks ago. Prior to the balloon tests that were conducted, which were on December 2, December 3, and December 7, a sightline evaluation was conducted from the areas indicated on the photo key sheet, using the existing 205-foot towers on-site to approximate sightlines to the proposed indoor sports field. These photos were then used in coordination with the balloon tests to develop renderings and locations where visibility appeared likely. The information prepared for the zoning board, and by evidence of their use and height variance approval, showed the use will not have a substantial adverse impact on the appearance and visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood. Last criteria, the use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities and by community facilities and services of a sufficient capacity to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use. The necessary public utilities required for this facility are available and are of sufficient capacity to ensure the proper operation of the use. We do have an approval letter from Gost, Grasmere Water Precinct. Plans have been reviewed by the fire department. Sarah has the opportunity, has had the opportunity as town engineer to review them as well, and we had just some minor items remaining. So, I think we are safe to say that we've met that criteria as well.
Do any board members have any questions for the applicant in regards to the conditional use permit requested in regards to the footprint of the proposed structure?
No.
No.
All right. I'm not hearing any, Nick, so why don't we address your second request in regards to the alternative parking?
Thank you. Relative to the alternative parking arrangement, I'm going to give you a little bit of subtext before that I read the actual conditions. I think it's important to note, there's no directly comparable use for the indoor sports field within subsection 7 to 5, Table of Oss Street Parking Requirements of the zoning ordinance. As such, the number of parking spaces proposed has been selected based on the anticipated use of the indoor field and substantiated by studies identified by the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE, Parking Generation Manual, 5th Edition, for Use Code 488 Soccer Complex. In the ITE manual, the average parking supply ratio for the 12 study sites with parking supply information is 41 spaces per field. Again, we're proposing just the one field here. All parking demand counts in the database were taken during a tournament, World League Games, for which a series of back-to-back games were held on each field. In order to provide an appropriate level of conservatism, TFM has selected the 85th percentile peak period parking demand per field for the study generating the largest parking demand. So, of all the studies provided, we picked the one with the largest number, which was 74.31. We rounded up to the nearest whole space at 75. Thus, 75 parking spaces should be sufficient, and 100 parking spaces have been provided. So, the applicant is requesting the planning board consider the following conditional use permit for an alternative parking arrangement. The use is specifically authorized by the ordinance as a conditional use. A conditional use permit is specifically authorized within the zoning ordinance per Section 752 and 7522, alternative parking arrangements, to allow an alternative parking arrangement based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Guide and Evaluation of Comparable Facilities, which is what we have done. If completed as proposed by the applicant, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of this article and with specific conditions or standards established in this ordinance for the particular use. I'm not going to reread these, but zoning board voted 5-0, zoning board voted 5-0. And then additionally, through meetings with town staff, planning, engineering, and fire, it was suggested the ability to build surplus parking. This was also something that Southern Planning brought up as an idea. Should it be required, was desirable. As such, a location for an additional 22 parking spaces has been identified on the site plans, with the impervious surface accounted for in the stormwater management report for the project. This would allow the applicant to build these spaces at any time, as the stormwater management facilities have been overdesigned to accommodate them. So, they won't have to come back to the planning board. For some reason, we're short on parking. They just go build the spaces. With variance approved for height and use and the availability to build additional parking, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of the applicable section and with the specific conditions and standards established in the ordinance for the proposed use. The use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or abutting uses in the area in which it's to be located. This is the same criteria that you heard with the prior application. The use will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety. Again, it's the same criteria that we heard. A TIS was completed. It shows there'd be no negative impacts to the adjacent intersections. The use will not have a substantial adverse impact of the appearance and visual quality of the surrounding neighborhoods. Same criteria that we discussed at the initial. And then last but not least, the use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities and by community facilities and services of a sufficient capacity to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use. Same answer.
Thank you. And, Nick, thank you for doing that. The file will reflect correspondence of February 21, which we had at the last meeting, in which the narrative was provided to us to address those issues. But I do like to go through each condition, even in Jim Raymond's absence, to make sure that we get them all on the record appropriately. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant in regards to the conditional use permits? Peter?
On the parking.
Yes, sir.
The 21 extra spaces that will be developed if necessary, who's going to determine if that's necessary?
There was actually, there was something that we had a chance to talk a little bit about at the last meeting. The reality is, if the town was to say, "You think you need to go build more parking," then you would certainly be within your right to do so. But the reality is, if the applicant's parking lot isn't working correctly, he's going to be the one that's the first to say, "We need to build this additional parking." We're showing the 100 spaces because we think only 75 is required. So, we said, "Okay, we're going to be a little more conservative, just because this is a different type of use that not everyone's used to." We look at IT, and they say, you know, 41 is typical. We did 75, then we added another 25 percent, or another 25 spaces to that, and then the additional 21, 22 spaces on top of that. So, this is really, it's belt, suspenders, and an extra tie clip here for the owner, just to make sure he has more than enough parking. So, I think more than anything, we're going to see the owner, who's going to be the one who wants to build that if it's proved to be necessary.
I remember the conversation.
Hold on, Joanne Peters, following up.
The conversation we had was, there was, seemed to be some worry about people parking on that outer road. So, if that was to happen, that would trigger the 21 extra spots?
Yes. I'll keep it as a simple answer. If someone doesn't have an adequate parking space and feels as if they need to park somewhere else, those spaces need to be built. I would agree with that.
Well, and in recognition that that is a pass-through for another site, so the applicant understands that that needs to be kept clear. It's not just a question of whether people are complaining to him.
Agreed. It's a safety issue.
Thank you. Joanne?
I did add that as condition number 10.
Why am I looking at a staff report that does, only has nine? What am I looking at?
That's the one I'm looking at that says nine.
I have nine, Joanne.
I have no idea, but I'll tell you what it says. Common issue as determined by the Planning and Economic Development Director, the planning board has the right to revisit the sightline for additional improvements. It's on the chair's agenda. It's just not numbered as 10.
Oh, I see it. The spacing is off, Kimberly. I just saw it. Thank you. And Phil, turn your clocks off.
Joanne, Joanne, I apologize. This is Nick. I heard the statement, "and additional improvements." We're talking about parking, correct? And additional parking versus and additional improvements?
Yeah. Why, why is it open-ended, Joanne?
Uh, no reason. That's just the word I chose. If you'd like to change it to parking, that's fine.
I think it's parking that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Barbara, I have a question.
Phil.
Yeah. On the, the parking spaces, I understand, because the attachments and information that Joanne had sent us, when they explain about the land use and stuff and, you know, descriptions, I guess, though, I'm just wondering on the calculation for the parking. I understand that there are no bleachers. There are no seats in here. Now, I guess, though, if we had a facility that had seats, you'd have a number of seats, and you'd be able to do a calculation as to how many people, there's a capacity in there. Is there anything as far as the capacity in the facility, let's say, the amount of spectators, that might affect the parking?
Let me do my best to answer that. This is Nick.
Here to parking.
Relative to capacity of the building, it'll be predicated on the building permit. So, the fire department will establish that number. My understanding is that number is not going to exceed 200.
Now, I guess, though, my, that's what my question is based on. If you take that maximum, let's say, 200, is that parking capable of handling that capacity?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions from board members? Other questions from board members on anything in regards to this application? Nick, I've got a, I just want to bring up again that the, the noise issue. You presented a lot of data in regards to the amount of noise that's going to be created by the powering equipment for this. And your representation is, is that it needs our noise.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, and that this should not be an issue in regards to anything off-site. And you're not exactly in the middle of residences, so I'm not really concerned about that. But when we talk about noise, it's a lot different than standing next to the piece of equipment generating it.
Understood. We did provide a narrative as to the acoustical evaluation. It's a very short sentence or two. If you'd like me to reread it, just for everybody's memory?
Sure.
Okay. An estimation of sound power levels and specifications, specifications for the proposed sound generating equipment are provided in this letter. Based on the values presented, the calculated sound pressure at a distance of 200 feet is 44 dBa, and a distance of 400 feet is 38 dBa. For the Handbook of Environmental Acoustics by James P. Cowan, 1994, Chart of Common Sounds and Associated Sound Level, dBa, this is equivalent to a library or a bedroom at night. Please note, the closest property line with a residential building is located approximately 346 feet from a sound source associated with the mechanicals of the air-inflated structure, and the residential home on that property is located a distance of 450 feet. So, we use the appropriate guideline relative to sound generation and applied it to our project.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Sarah, so your representation is, is that the retaining, retaining wall review and new plan is something that can be handled administratively?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. If I'm not seeing any more comments, Nick, do you have anything else?
Do not.
All right. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. There is no one present in the room for public comments, so I'm going to ask our town administrator if they're to open up the public lines. Is there anybody on the line that would like to make a comment in regards to this application before the board? This is 376 Gostown Back Road, Gostown, New Hampshire. This is a sports dome proposal for a tax map, 6 slot 1. I'm not hearing any public comment from anybody on the phone. Hearing no public comment. I am going to close the public hearing at this time.
Barbara, I have a few more comments to make.
Okay.
In the list of suggested conditions, I just wanted to propose three, well, more than three additional. There needs to be something in there about the note, about the trees being cared for in perpetuity if they were.
I've already, I've got that one written down.
Can I add that that was also a condition of the zoning board approval?
Hold on, Joanne. Just so you know, that was apparently a condition of the ZBA approval.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't have the ZBA. I will just say that I want to make sure, if we're going to make it a condition of our approval, it is exactly the same as what the ZBA.
Want me to pull it up?
Okay.
Yeah. Gail's going to pull it up while you're talking. What else did you have?
About the retaining wall, we need to add that as a condition. It's in Sarah's comments, but I failed to include it in the conditions. So, I had a question for Sarah. So, PW would, would require the wall design by a third-party engineer to be paid for by the applicant. However, normally, we also have that same engineer look over the construction of the wall, and I wanted to check with Sarah if that would be a condition here.
Yep. Comment number six of my comments says that there's, like, site inspections required and retaining wall construction is included in that.
I've got it, Sarah.
So, that, so that, that number six needs to be included, as well as, I believe, Sarah's comments, number seven, which requires the drainage maintenance agreement, and number eight, which requires the sewer staff to provide final review before the plans are signed.
Have there been any issues with sewer review where the drainage on the site? I'm not hearing any, and the applicant is indicating he doesn't think there are any.
My understanding is our septic designer has reviewed it with the town. There were some minor edits requested. Edits have been made and sent back. Unfortunately, with Town Hall closing, he hasn't had the opportunity to send back the form. I'm assuming he'll get to it as soon as he's able.
So, a condition, that condition is in the works as we speak?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. Anything else?
Kind of just, just in case my juror has any final comment, we don't really expect there to be. I just, I wanted to include it in there.
Yep, nope, that's fine. So, on your report, Sarah, we're going to add 6, 7, and 8.
And then also the one about the retaining wall.
The ZBA comment. Gail was looking it up.
Oh, the retaining wall? No.
No, the trees.
Yeah.
The retaining wall, just for a minute, Gail. I think Sarah's point was, is that her comment number six addresses the retaining wall.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Let me cross that out. Okay.
All right. Gail?
There was a motion made to grant the variance to allow the building height of 75 feet. And then I asked if they would add a condition that, that it be specified that it's an air-supported structure and that the landscaping proposed is always maintained. And I explained that the planning board may have landscaping requirements that are more stringent, and that's okay. But if they are less stringent, then ours are to be combined with them.
Gail, what's the date on that approval?
January 7.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that was, that amendment was made to the motion.
All right. Um, I thought that what we were talking about was the trees.
So the screening trees, which are these folks here, these folks here.
The 14 screening trees. I, so what is, what do you think the applicant is proposing in regards to on agreed-upon note on the plan for landscaping now?
Between what we discussed with the ZBA as well as the planning board, any of these trees that are required or are being provided for the purposes of shielding portions of the development, if they are to be dead or diseased or otherwise, they need to be replaced.
All right. So I understand there to be a distinction between trees and shrubs. That's why I'm asking.
Right.
Well, normally, if, if I could just add to that, I mean, that's true, but are you still there?
Yes.
Okay. But normally, um, you know, an applicant is supposed to have the site plan, whatever the site plan was approved as is supposed to continue on unless they changed the site plan and have approval from the town. So if many of, say, the bushes die, they're still supposed to replace them.
I understand that. At the beginning of the meeting, though, we were talking about trees and the ZBA approval was landscaping. So I just wanted to make it clear.
No ambiguity on the applicant's side. If it's landscaping at large.
Okay.
We want it to be an attractive facility. We want people to enjoy their experience.
Okay. Any other issues for board members?
Uh, Barbara?
Phil?
I had a comment on the, the thing about the waiver for the trees. So I'm just not sure when's the appropriate time to talk about that.
Well, I think if, I've got no more comments on the plan. We are going to address the waivers, conditional use permit, and then I will be looking for a motion on this application. Everybody okay with proceeding on that? All right. Um, a waiver has been requested in connection with this plan. The waiver was granted for acceptance purposes only. And it was in regards for 14 street trees where 19 are required. A waiver is granted where application of the regulations would cause practical difficulty. We have the ability to waive the specific plan when we find that it does not affect the purpose and intent of the regulations. Is there a motion to grant the waiver for 14 trees as compared to the required 19? As the granting of it will not adversely affect the purpose and intent of these regulations?
I'll make that motion.
Peter has made the motion. Is there, David has seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Barbara, I just wanted to, one thing though, I wanted to bring up on it, and I, I, I agree with the waiver. And, um, I was looking, I'm looking at the, the little plans. And my recollection is that there's a, uh, an emergency exit, looking at the, uh, uh,
The street?
And, uh, it's over towards where they're requesting, uh, the waiver for the trees.
At the end of the.
Because I, I remember when I was.
Yeah, yeah. There were doors along the outside. Yep.
Right. Now, I understand, and, and when you said the capacity here was 200, um, that's still quite a few people. If something were to happen, you take the, the exits and you figure how many people, you know, you, if you just average how many people are going out in that area. I just, I just see people going out those emergency exits. And I think that not having the trees there, it's, uh, that's the, that's the direction they'd want to go rather than going left and going across between a building that they're trying to leave and the trees. So that, that was my, that's my reason for supporting the waiver.
So not having the trees there is actually beneficial in the case of an emergency.
It's amazing.
Okay. Peter?
Barbara, should we amend that to say specifically where those trees are being eliminated from?
Um.
Is that necessary?
I don't know that we control the specifics of where. I think it was more for a screen. Nick was saying that the most likely screening point would be there. I mean, we can say as presented in the plan.
As presented in the plan is probably the easiest way because there's two components to the, there's the number of trees and they're supposed to be separated at a certain distance. So the reason why I point out that it's in this area specifically is because that's the area in which they're not provided along that length. And if we were to continue them at 40-foot spacing, then it would meet the requirements. But we're asking not to provide them there for the reasons given.
Thank you, Peter. So we'll take that as an amendment. Any further discussion on the waiver request for the trees? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. The waiver is granted. The next request in regards to this matter is the conditional use permit for new ha, for our regs in regards to Table 4.3, maximum building footprint greater than 50,000 square foot. The applicant has graciously gone through the criteria for us during the course of the meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the 80,500 square foot and able to, uh, put into the soccer field.
Making the findings says the applicant has requested in regards to the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
But we'll take Phil. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Peter?
Yes.
Actually, it's not that way. This, it's a roll call, so vote yes or no. So Peter, yes. David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. The conditional use permit in regards to the footprint is granted. There is also a request for a conditional use permit in regards to alternative parking arrangements. The applicant has addressed in the record the requirements of our regulations. Is there a motion? Peter?
I'll make the motion.
Motion machine tonight.
Well, I think it's hard if you're calling in probably to be there.
I don't know. I mean.
Give them a hard time.
Yeah.
You watched the selectments meeting last night. I think I made all the motions on that one too.
On a roll.
All right. Is there a second? David?
I will second.
David? All right. Is there any, so this motion is similar to the prior motion only as to the alternative parking arrangements. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The second conditional use permit is granted. Board members, we are now left with an application. The waiver and conditional use permits have been granted. Staff has proposed, um, 10 conditions plus condition six, seven, and eight from the Department of Public Works report along with a, what will be a 14th condition, which is in regards to the planning, the requirement to maintain the landscaping as approved.
Barbara, can I just add something to condition number seven?
And what would that be?
So it, please provide an easement document for recording purposes for the relocation of the emergency access easement. I just wanted to add, signed by all easement holders.
Oh, yes. The infamous access easement. Yes. We would like that signed by all easement holders. Okay.
And just one question. Um, number nine states that the easement relocation will need to be approved by the select board. Um, it says that was recommended by the town administrator, but this is a private easement. I'm not sure the select board would get involved with that.
That notice news to me, so I don't.
I think we can eliminate nine based on Derek's input. I don't think we had select board approval of the other written documents associated with this project and various lot developments. They probably don't want to get involved in it now.
Yeah, I'm good.
The infamous Tower Lane. All right. So I think we have 13 conditions then. That would be one through eight. And what is, would be nine, should parking become an issue? Along with then what is going to be 10, 11, 12, site inspection, drainage maintenance agreement, and the review of plans by Mike Girgo for sewer, and then the landscaping as 13.
Which one includes DPW review and approval of the retaining wall?
Um, on the Department of Public Works, in the packet that was mailed to us, number six.
Number six, thank you.
All right.
I see it. Thank you.
Okay. And I understand from Sarah that that actually, as to the retaining wall, is actually in the works as recently as this afternoon. So, um, is there a motion to approve or not approve this application with the 13 conditions?
I make a motion to approve the application with the, uh, 13. What was it? Up to 14. 14 conditions that we discussed.
I think it's 13 because we took out nine.
Took out nine. 13. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Application is approved. Thank you for coming in.
Great night.
The next item before us tonight is map 16, lot eight. This is La Pointe. Joe Wicker is here on behalf of the applicant. I think, is Joe here?
I haven't seen him yet. Jimmy, I'll, I'll check the parking lot on my way out.
I bet he's in the parking lot. I'm going to call him right now.
The delay is like five or six seconds, so. Thank you.
Get my next Lysol wipeout? Joe, this is Barbara Griffin. We're all set for you to come in. For those of you watching, this sort of contorted methodology is to try and comply with the existing emergency order to make sure that there are no more than 10 people at any scheduled meeting. I happen to disagree with the interpretation of that rule, but we're complying with it regardless.
You had to get that in there.
I did. I did. Well, poor Derek has had to deal with it with me over the path.
Right up front.
Joe, we're up there for this sit-up, Joe. Thank you. All right. While you're sitting up, Joe, I'm just going to introduce the application. And this is an application in regards to map 16, lot eight. This is a completeness review subdivision and conditional use permit for a proposal to create a two-lot subdivision. This is a plan dated November 12th of 2019 with a revision of February 20th, 2020. There is currently a two-story house on the premises, which is serviced by municipal water and sewer. The existing pay of turnaround easement for town use due to Hague Street being a dead-end street. This property is located on Hague Street in the R2 zone. Um, the proposed turnaround will be relocated as shown on the plan. The applicant is requesting a two-lot subdivision and a conditional use permit to allow for two driveways on the newly created lot for a proposed duplex. The duplex requires the variance for the ZBA and the lot dimensions. The applicant is scheduled to meet with the ZBA on April 7th. Joanne, do we need to know, know anything else about this application before we make a determination as to regional impact?
There is no regional impact.
All right. And is the application complete?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on.
No dancing.
That's quite all right. Um, is there a motion to find this plan has no regional impact, that it's complete and can be accepted for review?
I do.
Don't move.
Don't move. Just David seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Um, Joanne, why don't you bring us up to date on what this request is?
Okay. So there's currently property on Hague Street, which, um, contains a, a single-family home. And the applicant would like to subdivide this property into two lots, creating one new lot. And on that new lot, he is thinking about, um, constructing a duplex. However, he would like to have two driveways for the duplex, one on each side of the unit. And he doesn't have enough frontage for, to do, enabled to do that. So he's looking for a conditional use permit to allow for the duplex to be built. However, we sent him to the planning board first because he needs the variance because the lot itself is not large enough, the newly created lot is not large enough for a duplex, only a single-family home. So he needs the variance in order to build the duplex. But before we could send him straight to the zoning board, we had to first send him to the planning board so that the new lot could be created. Um, I did speak, Patty did speak with, um, Joe Wicker this afternoon. And she called me and asked me some questions. And, um, Joe would like to, uh, provide a proposal, um, that he actually, that the board just acts on the subdivision this evening and then goes and to the zoning board to see if they're able to obtain the variance for the duplex. Because otherwise they'll go ahead and build a single-family and then a variance will not be needed.
Okay. We'll let Joe address that. From a process standpoint, that sounds like something I'll tell you I'm a lot more comfortable with. But, um, we'll hear from the applicant as we, in regards to his proposal. Is there anything else we need to know about this application, Joanne?
Uh, no, not at the moment. He does need, um, some waivers in addition to the conditional use permit at some point. But the waivers are listed in the comments. There are three waivers. One is stamped wetland delineation. The second is stormwater management plan. And the third is erosion control standards.
Okay. And those waivers are needed in regards to the subdivision?
Correct.
And so if we're proceeding with just a subdivision, we would not need to address the, the conditional use permit?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Well, we'll get to hear from the applicant as to whether where's, that's what's going on. Does anybody have any questions for staff in regards to this application? Sarah, do you have any comments on this application?
All of my comments, I believe, are very minor plan edits. Because we met with them and they made a lot of changes to the plan. Um, they were working with Mike on some of the sewer stuff.
Okay. Yeah, we, in our packet that we received on pages 13 and 14, have your comments, which do not, as you say, deal, seem to deal a lot with sewer and just some changing, some, some minor stuff on the plan.
And I apologize. I don't have a copy of your packet.
Oh, no. I, thank you. I'm sort of saying that for the benefit of board members too, um, as to what they're looking at. And as far as any turnaround issues, you're confident that you can deal with that with the. And as far as any turnaround issues, you're confident that you can deal with that with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm not seeing any questions from board members, so at this point.
Oh, actually, I'm noticing something. I'm pretty sure on the previous application, one of the comments that was deleted was per town administrator easement relocation will have to be approved by the select board. And I was combing through my comments trying to figure out where that came from. That is part of this application. So I think that was an error in the staff report.
That makes sense, okay. That makes sense. Because the select board was involved in the Hague Street. Okay. Derek, do you have that? Because as part of the DPW work that got done in that area with drainage, they had to deal with property owners in regards to easements for turnarounds in the drainage system. And they approved those. So thank you, Sarah, for pointing that out.
It's listed as number 23 as a condition of approval.
Yes. Page 15.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right. Joe, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Joe Wicker. I'm the surveyor. And I'm here on, tonight on behalf of Lucia Burke, who's the owner. To my left is Daniel La Pointe, who's the applicant. So I think Joanne kind of covered a lot of things well. For the, for the purpose of the presentation, we'd like to kind of break it up into two parts. So the first part would be the creation of the lot, and we think that's relatively straightforward. So the subject property is lot eight on tax map 16. It currently has 292 feet of frontage and 27,182 square feet. The proposal is to create one new building lot. The new building lot would be 16,672 square feet. It would have approximately 187 feet of frontage total, leaving, and that would leave the existing house on a lot that would have 105 feet of frontage and 10,510 square feet of area. Property is owned R2. Ordinance requires 100 foot of frontage and 10,000 square foot of area. So the lots are fully complying for the creation of the base lot. Sarah mentioned, we've worked with DPW, and as you can see, I don't know if you want me to get on the board or?
Yeah, that's fine.
So currently, the sewer, sewer service ends here at this manhole. There's a little stub that goes into here. So in order to bring sewer in for the new lot, and then there's also this lot 14 on tax map 16, which is 100 by, it has a frontage on Pershing Street, but also goes all the way through. So because that has the potential to be developed, we were asked to extend the water, the sewer to here, which we've done. We did meet with DPW and we had some, we've worked through a lot of those changes. And then the water line ends right here at this hydrant. So Manchester Water Works, as a general rule, their policy is when you extend a water main as part of a subdivision, they'd like you to go to the end of your frontage. And what we've done is we, we've made a submission to Water Works. They were, they provided us comments. The revised plans addressed those comments for Water Works. We have not, we have not heard back from Water Works, so that's, we're still waiting for their sign-off. But staff at Water Works cannot make the determination about whether or not the water main has to go all the way to the end of the frontage or whether they'll approve the waiver to where we're showing it. That has to be made by the water commissioners.
So you're, so technically Manchester would require you to go all the way past the easement, turnaround easement?
Uh, right. They would, they, by, by rule, they would have us go to here.
They would consider that the end of the lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so, but it's the same principle that, so what we have agreed to is there's a hydrant in the valve here. That's gonna be relocated to the end, and then that would still allow for this lot for a future connection. They, they would not need to do a water main extension. We have done similar waiver requests in Manchester that have been approved. It's up to the commissioners, and so once we get past this part, they'll have a commissioners' meeting next month and we'll, we'll go in and apply to them. So I think the only thing that I just wanted to clarify is we're not really redoing the turnaround. So the existing turnaround sits in here. That's the pavement turnaround that exists. This dotted line is the existing easement. So on the west end, the pavement actually goes over the limits of the easement. So because we were here, we just figured it would make sense to locate the easement so it's centered on the pavement. You know, that was, I think, the original intent, was that they wanted to have the thumb of the turnaround be inside the easement. When it got built, it just didn't get built that way. So now we were proposing to move the easement so it's centered on the thumb, which I think would have been the initial proposal. If the board or the select board doesn't want to move that, that's fine. We can leave it where it is. We just thought it would clean it up and kind of center that. So that's why we're proposing that. As part of this, we have, like you mentioned, we're gonna have a sewer main extension. There's gonna be two new sewer manholes installed for, for the extension. In addition to the applicant is going to pay to replace the existing manhole at the end of the line, which is in poor condition and DPW is asked to have replaced. The lots itself, I think, are fairly straightforward. I don't think we have, we're not asking for any waivers. I'm sorry, we're not asking the lot complies with all the zoning ordinance and everything. We are asking for three waivers, as Joanne mentioned. The stamped wetlands delineation, so it's a small urban lot. You know, you can see it all. There are no wetlands on the property. We just have not had a wetland scientist go run out to certify to that. And then stormwater management and the erosion control standards. So what we have done on those two, because it's a roadfront subdivision and we're not 100% sure what was gonna get built, is we, we've added some erosion control notes and some general best management practices onto sheet, sheet three on the upper left. So we've added those erosion control notes. So I think that will hopefully, hopefully help with the favorable action on the waiver request. So the rest of the application, I think, is somewhat straightforward. I'll go into it briefly, is that the La Pointes would like to build a duplex. We do have a, an application pending to the zoning board of adjustment for that. That has to, Joanne had advised us to do that after we meet with you first, so we are. As part of that, as part of that application, they would prefer to have two driveways. We only, as we only have 187 feet of frontage, we're less than the 250 required by your ordinance to get a second curb cut. So that's why we submitted the conditional use permit. When Joanne and I were speaking, I agree with what she's saying. There's really probably not a lot of sense to spend time tonight on the conditional use permit for the extra curb cut. It will depend on what the zoning board does. If the zoning board were to act favorably on the variance request, we could always come back to this board, and we've already submitted our argument. So Joanne had suggested that we ask to be tabled to, I believe it's April, I think it's the 23rd or the 23rd, I think.
Yeah, it's the 23rd.
So, you know, I think that would make the most sense because if the zoning board were not to look favorably on the request, then the applications move.
So do you want a subdivision approval tonight or not?
Uh, yes, if we could get the subdivision approval and then the CUP, we can wait if that, if the, if the variance is approved for a duplex, we would come back to the board.
And we'd only be looking at the one lot?
Uh, for the CUP, correct. Yep. And then that way, we're not spending time on something that may or may not happen that's beyond all of our control.
All right, Joanne, do you agree that we can just act on the subdivision request with the waivers tonight?
Yes, you can do that and then continue the CUP to the 23rd of April because they would be going to see the zoning board of adjustment on April 7th, I believe. So you'll have an answer in plenty of time.
All right, I think, frankly, I thank the applicant for that. I looked at this application. I thought we were trying to put a little bit too much in the cookie jar for tonight. And so I think that makes it a lot more straightforward. All right, Sarah, do you have any comments on, on the waiver requests for this plan?
No, I do not.
All right, Kimberly, do you have any comments on the waiver requests?
No, I'm all set.
All right, because when I see wetland delineation and stormwater management, I sort of want to know where you are on them.
I checked the National Wetland Inventory map. He's right, there's nothing there.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so in this, do board members have any other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. On this case, this application is in regards to map 16 lot eight. It is a completeness review, conditional use permit subdivision review hearing. The action being requested tonight relates to the subdivision request, which will require waivers. There is no member of the public here that to make comment. Is there anybody online that would want to make a comment on this application?
No, there are only board members and staff.
Online, okay. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point in time, subject to any continuance that may be granted in regards to the conditional use permit. Does anybody have any other comments or discussions about this? This is the subdivision request that creates two confirming, two conforming lots. I'm seeing.
No.
Joanne, was that you?
No, Kimberly, sorry.
Kimberly, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I said no, I have no comment.
All right, okay. Well, can I have, in regards to the waiver requests? Let me get to my waivers here. Waivers can be granted when the strict application of the regulations would cause practical difficulty and we determine that the waiver will not affect the purpose and intent of the regulations. Waivers granted would be shown on the final subdivision plan. The waivers requested are as to section 6M stamped wetlands delineation, appendix C stormwater management plan, and appendix D erosion control standards. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Peter has made a motion to approve the waiver requests.
Did you go through them or you already did it?
I think the motion, I think you've, your motion includes that it meets the standards required by the development reg. Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll.
David, beat you to it, Phil.
Hey.
Is there any further discussion on the waiver request motion that's before the board? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Okay. Waivers have been granted, and we have a request for approval of the subdivision waivers would need to be shown on the plan. Is there a motion?
Are you voting on the approval of the plan?
Of the, well, of the subdivision, subject to.
So there would be conditions include? I would change number six to just say driveway permit is required from DPW. And then on number seven, it says legal counsel shall review submittal of recordable easement. And I would add for the actual easement as shown on the plan. Like have a reference to the fact that he's not relocating it. He's showing what's actually being used as a, as. So he's granting more land to the town to be included in that easement.
I got a question on that. If you look at the plan, the dotted line is the easement that we currently have.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So that we have an easement in writing, do we, Joe?
Yeah, but hold on, let me finish. What they're looking to do is move that easement over, is that about nine feet? Is that what that's saying?
Correct, yeah.
Move that easement over nine feet. And that'll also allow them to have that sec, if, if that driveway gets take, approved, that would also allow them to keep that driveway out of that easement, if I'm looking at that right. Would that be accurate?
So believe this or not, when we did this, we weren't sure which way we were going. I thought it made sense to move the easement, and then when we had a meeting, it was brought up that we were moving it for that. And I don't, that wasn't what the main reason. The main reason was, you know, right now, currently, if you plow snow off of the west side of that turnaround, you're on somebody else's property. So we were here, we were gonna have that located. But the only thing I agree with you is we're, so we're not necessarily giving you any more easement area. Yes. It's a 40 by 45 easement, and we're gonna center it on the existing pavement. And if the board, like I said, if the board doesn't like that and they, they want to keep it where it is, we're fine with that. That's fine.
What, does that impact, but does that impact your driveway? Would you, if, if you get that second driveway? Because that second driveway would end up on that easement, is that correct? If we don't move it? I see no reason not to move it, really.
No, I don't see any reason not to move it. I mean, I sort of view that independent of the proposed.
And that's, that's how we originally did it because we weren't sure whether we were going a single, a single-family or a two-family dwelling. So if it turns out that, say, we go to the zoning board and the zoning board were to approve the application, we would probably take the house and shift it further east, so it's outside of that area. It's outside of that nine-foot area that, that's currently part of an under-easement and wouldn't be under-easement anymore. So we'd probably just shift the whole thing down. But whereas we're not sure what the zoning board's gonna do, you know, we can see what that happens and we can address that when it happens.
Well, so I guess I'm confused. Do you want us to grant the change in the easement or do you want to wait and see what the ZBA?
We, no, we thought changing the easement was a good housekeeping method now.
Yeah, I know, I'm okay.
Yeah, we just didn't do it for the driveway. One in few times in life where we did something that worked, whatever.
An honest applicant. Joanne?
So then for number seven, condition number seven, I would recommend changing it to say legal counsel shall review submittal of recordable easement for the easement relocation.
Yeah, all right, but Joanne, in regards to the conditions, some of these conditions relate to the variance that we are not dealing with now because now we have a straight subdivision. So if I go through your 23 comments, I don't think we need eight anymore.
Okay.
And do we need four? Because we're not, we're not approving a, a building. I mean, I guess we do, but. I think.
If they, if they decide that if the variance is not approved, then they would be building a building and they don't need to come back to you.
All right, so what, so we'll, one through seven, with seven as amended, eight comes out. We don't need 10 because that's a duplication of what we're doing for seven, right?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That just means that they have to provide the actual easement document so that we can record it at the same time the plan gets recorded.
All right, so we'll keep that. Do we want to get into these water and hydrant extensions or are these more applicable to whatever the proposed development of the site is? And I guess I'm asking Joe that, the applicant that.
So I, I think the, we have, I believe that this latest submission resolves all of Water Works' concerns, with the exception of will they approve the waiver on the length of the, the actual main extension? So I think if you kept them in there, like, I'm trying to go through it. So the high, so number four, where is it now? So 13 is just the proposed water main must be petitioned and approved by the Water Works. We're aware of that, so that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, this plan does show the hydrant being relocated to the end of the line. And then number 15, the configuration with the extra manhole, I believe DPW was satisfied with that, and it resolves the comment from Water Works, although we don't have a formal okay because they're on a half-schedule as well, so. So I, I think those comments can stay in, in, in the approval. All those comments will be resolved when, when we make that submission.
All right, and so administratively, we can not have those on the plan because they'll be taken care of in the final plan review?
Sure, that's, it's up to you.
I mean, if you don't, if you don't have to have a plan with 23 things.
No, I'm fine with that, you know. No, I'm fine with that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get final sign-off from DPW and Water Works when we bring it in.
Okay.
Normally, Joe will submit a final plan to staff addressing these types of comments, and then they come off the list.
Right, so administratively, you'll make sure that all of these comments are dealt with. So, the only comment that we're getting rid of is eight, which relates specifically to the variance.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need twenty-one, but I suppose it doesn't need to go on the plan, so it doesn't matter. Since it's just a subdivision. All right. Do the, do boards members have any issues with this? Plan? We've voted on the waiver? We did, right?
Yeah.
So, board members, what we have is a plan that nobody is expressing any issues with, with the request to approve, with the omission of condition number eight, with the recognition that as to the conditional use permit, it would be continued. Is there a motion?
So, you motion, you want to motion to approve the subdivision, is that what you're looking at?
Right, yeah.
I'll make that motion with the twenty-two... Two conditions.
Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Too late, Phil. He had to push the button.
I'm sure there's a little delay going on. Is there any further discussion on this motion? This deals with the subdivision requested only. All those in favor say aye, but, or oppose. Sorry, I'm doing a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, also before us is the conditional use permit. Is there a motion to continue that to what date, Joanne?
Twenty-third, right?
April twenty-third.
Motion to continue the conditional use review on April twenty-third.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it.
And that will also include a public hearing in regards to anything that might come before the board on that night. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too. The next application before us tonight is in regards to map nine, lot ninety-five-one. This is a request for relief from the outer fifty of the hundred-foot wetlands, and I am going to call that applicant now, because I don't hear anybody in the hall.
He was in, he was in his car.
Mr. Kilmer, this is Barbara Griffin with the planning board. We're all set. Thank you. Great, I'll go back with my two devious lice saw. They're all supposed to be disinfected. Hi there, sir.
Hello.
If you want to go down to the end over there.
All right.
Do it inside or outside of the room? Great. All right, you can have a seat. I'm going to start the, the hearing now, which will be some administrative things. We are about to begin a hearing on relief from the outer fifty-foot of the hundred-foot wetland and surface water conservation district. The location of the property is at three fifty-eight East Dunbarton Road. This is map nine, lot ninety-five dash one. The property owners are Stephen and Gislane Tibetz. I hope I haven't mispronounced that too badly, my apologies. Three forty-four East Dunbarton Road, Gosstown, New Hampshire. This is in the conservation, water surface wetlands conservation overlay district. And the property is located on East Dunbarton Road along Hardy Brook, and there has been a determination that this application for relief does not have regional impact. Is that correct, Joanne?
That's correct.
And is the application complete for this waiver request?
Um, it's, it's complete, however, we were not able to get comments from the Conservation Commission because they canceled their meeting for March. I did check the ordinance, and it says that the planning board will provide plans to conservation, and the conservation will provide comments. Doesn't say shall, so I'm not sure what the board would like to do about whether or not they feel that they need comments from conservation on this or not.
Well, it would seem to me we could accept it for, at a minimum, to discuss it, and we can make a determination based on our review and any comments we might get as to how we want to handle it. We're going to prob, this probably won't be the only plan that might end up with a convoluted route due to changes in meeting schedules because of everything going on. If the board thinks that's acceptable, could I have a motion to find it has no regional impact, and the application is complete for consideration by this board?
I'll do it.
Peter has done it. Is there a second?
Yes.
David is seconding it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, the application is accepted for review. Joanne, you want to give us the background on this and what we're looking at, please?
Sure. Um, the applicant currently has a house and they, and a, and a paved driveway along the side of their house. They would like to add an extension of gravel to the existing paved driveway so that they can access an addition of a gravelled area where they would park trailers, and they would build a barn at the end of that driveway. So, in order to access the back of their land, they need to provide some sort of a drive, extension of their driveway. They're not planning to pave it as the original driveway is paved, but they're planning to do gravel. There's a, uh, the, the surface water disturbance is within the outer fifty feet, which is dealt with by the planning board, and the disturbance consists of nine hundred and ten square feet. This property is grandfathered from any wetland setbacks, so they would not apply at this time.
How many feet again, Joanne?
Nine hundred and ten.
All right, and would they need, so the, would they need a building permit for the proposed barn?
Yes, they would.
But they would not be subject to any wetlands setback issues?
No, because they don't apply.
All right, and, but is it correct, and I guess I'll look to the applicant to see if he's nodding, the wet issues are on the other side of the lot?
As far as...
Okay, Joanne said correct, so, okay. And we've received a wetlands function and value report?
Correct.
Yes, that was received. For environmental, did the report, and the conclusion was that it would have no, a negative impact upon the wetland environment or the individual species persisting therein.
Do any board members have any questions about this before we hear from the applicant?
No.
I'm not seeing any, so welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bob Kilmer from Sanford Surveying and Engineering, representing the client at map nine, lot ninety-five dash one. Basically, Joanne has covered quite a bit of it. Again, the lot was created by subdivision in nineteen eighty-seven, so it, you know, it falls in that the surface water, Conservation District, but it doesn't deal with the wetland portion of that. Um, again, what they're seeking to do is build a barn in the back here. They, what they've done is they purchased this property in October. They're looking to downsize. They own this property now, and they're downsizing to move into here. The, the barn is for storage of a tractor, lawn equipment, ATV, and like that, you know, just to storage, to get it out of the weather and like that. Initially, when we came in, in January, we were attempting to use a small, approximately eight-foot-wide gravel drive that already exists. But in the first review, we, we found out that the driveway length, as it is right now, is at the three-hundred-foot limit. So, what that puts us into is that we have to create a sixteen-foot gravel drive with two-foot clearance on each side and a turnaround up to the barn for access for NFPA standards for the fire department. So, basically, what we're doing is just creating the larger drive, again, pushing it away from the fifty, the inner fifty feet, and creating it like that to the standards. Any questions yet? Again, we were, again, proposing, the existing drive was sixty, roughly sixty-five feet in length, and we were going to take another, roughly another sixty-five to get to the barn with storage, as Joanne mentioned, over here. Having to change that, we're basically doing about a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty feet of all sixteen-foot-wide gravel with the turnaround to the barn, and, again, this will be gravel, but it can't be used as any kind of storage, because the fire department needs to have that access, has to be over.
Okay. Thank you. There were some comments from DPW. Sarah, did you have some questions or comments on this?
Yes, um, when Mike Gergo was doing a final check of this, he noticed that the existing driveway at the road edge, looks like it actually goes on to the neighboring lot.
Correct, it does. The actual property corner is within the pavement. When they developed this property, it, uh...
And they own the other lot, I'm just saying...
At this point, they own the other lot. Again, and, to be honest, once he gets this done, he gets to build the garage, he's planning on doing a lot-line adjustment with the other piece. If you have a tax map here, you'll see this large piece. This is exist, their existing house. And what they're proposing to do, once he can get his barn, the driveway in, start the barn, they're putting the existing house on the market, and he's trying, he will come in with a lot-line adjustment plan, correct the driveway parcel, and, and proposing to take all this property here and add it to the smaller lot at that point. So, we will take care of that problem with the driveway at, at a later date.
Why aren't we taking care of it now?
As, but we could give it an easement.
Okay.
If, if that's required, you know.
I, you, I don't think you can give an easement to yourself. It would have to be after the property is sold.
Well, it's, you can, it's not called an easement. What is it called?
I don't have Jim here, but if they, there is something that they can do, because they're different lots, so they, even though it would be the same signatories, they can do it.
Yes. And then it, you know, at the time he came in to do the lot-line adjustment, if he still continues to want to do that, one of the things will, that easement will be extinguished along with a lot-line adjustment.
Can you explain again to me what looks like it might be the green that runs against the property line there?
Green here?
No, other way. Along the property, along the abutting lot line, yeah. What is that again?
Oh, that's the tree line.
Oh, that's the tree line.
Existing tree line here, yes.
Okay.
Is what the green is.
All right, thank you. All right, so Sarah, that was your comment.
Yeah, we also wondered if it would be possible to do a little erosion control just along the, I guess, the portion of the new gravel area, or just be very mindful of the portion of the gravel area that is the closest, exactly, yeah.
Right, as, as far as during construction until it's, until it's...
Stabilized, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have that. Joanne has proposed that as a condition to provide erosion control on the northern edge of the proposed driveway extension during construction.
And I believe your other comment was a, a permit for a driveway...
Modification?
Yes.
Yep, and the driveway modification is free, available from DPW, and I believe a, there's a fillable version available online, so you could even get started soon.
All right, and not have to go anywhere.
Okay.
All right, board member questions or comments? Kimberly? Do you have anything?
No, I have no, I have no questions or comments. I was actually just looking up the site on Google Earth, and, you know, the existing gravel driveway just skirts that fifty-foot outer, outer buffer line, so I, and the rest of it's lawn, and, and, you know, as long as it stays gravel. I mean, gravel is actually impervious, I, you know, so let's not pretend it's not, but it, you know, it's a paved driveway that's going to be on a lawn as it is now, so I don't have any problems with it, with that, giving them the relief of the outer fifty-foot buffer. My concern would be procedurally, we tend not to step over the Conservation Commission's toes.
Well, and so I, I understand that, so, um, there are a couple of ways we can handle it. I mean, I think procedurally, we could approve it subject to conservation approval. We could, um, continue this for approval to the next meeting after the Conservation Committee meeting. I mean, I certainly think there are a number of way, a couple of ways we could handle it. I, I, I don't see this as a major intrusion on the fi, outer fifty-foot, and as Kimberly says, it's gravel, so I'm not as concerned about this request as I might be for others. I also know that people were very anxious to get going on projects this spring, and that has been dampened a little bit by the moisture we got this week, so, um, I don't know. Board, how do you propose? Peter?
I, I would think that we would go with the first option that you gave, is approving it, to the point where we go to Conservation, you know, approve it with their consent after they've reviewed it.
Other board members, your opinion. Kimberly, what do you think of that?
I think that's fine. I, I don't know that they would have anything other than what we suggested, which would be good erosion control. I just feel like out of respect, we need to give them that option to weigh in, so I, I like that option.
All right, so we can do it for the four conditions that are proposed and subject to approval by Conservation Commission?
Yep, that sounds good.
case they wouldn't have approved the same thing we have and the applicant would have to come back. Peter?
Doesn't it make sense if they go to there and they get it approved, they have to come back here just to say?
No, I agree.
Oh, yeah, we agree. I mean, it's just, that's kind of a waste of time.
If con, but if conserva, our approval is subject to this plan, if Conservation wants a change or a different condition, the applicant would need to come back to us. Any other comments from board members on, on that, how to proceed? So.
I'll make that motion.
Go, let's see, with the.
Can I just ask one question about her comment about the edge of that? Did, she didn't want us to take that out. I would rather just leave it alone in, since it's gravel, there's, you know, there's grass and all that stuff within the gravel at that point, too. I'd just like to leave it.
Sarah, if you, Sarah, when you made your comment, you talked about erosion control during construction and I think the applicant would prefer to whatever erosion control he does to leave it.
No, 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 that was towards, uh, Kimberly's comment. I thought she had a comment about the, the wanting to gingerly take that out, or was it just leave it alone? I.
Kimberly, do you, can you respond to that? I'm not sure I heard what he's talking about.
Uh, sure. I, I'm sorry if there was confusion. I, I was just commenting that if the existing gravel driveway, that's sort of the beginning of the plan that, you know, will be expanded upon, is already right at that edge of the 50-foot. So I guess my, my comment is more that we've already got disturbance in that outer 50-foot anyway, so I don't have any concerns about this.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. All right, now I understand. Sorry. All right. Anybody else have comments on this plan application? Do I have a motion?
Make the motion, we approve it with, after going to review, uh, the Conservation Committee.
With the conditions of a driveway modification permit, um, erosion control and best management practices. I do have a question. How does the board want to address the easement? Do we want, um, the appropriate documentation to address the driveway lot line crossing?
Just, I have a question. That doesn't, does that have anything to do with that, the addition to the driveway?
I would say no. Other board members? All right. I, I don't know that it's an issue for this application. Other board members? Phil, you have any comment?
I, yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with it.
So I guess Peter's motion, I understood, to not include addressing the driveway lot line overlap. Do any board members feel that it needs to be addressed at this time?
No.
Okay. I'm not hearing anything. It's a private line overlap and the lot lines will have to address it in the future. All right, so I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Phil. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. We shall see you next at Conservation Commission.
Whenever, it's such be.
That's right. Uh, we're, we're, we have a date, but.
Let's hope they get together.
The shifting.
Subject, subject to change.
Subject to change, but I think, you know, if we can run meetings like this, I think we can sort of keep things moving on. All right, Joanne, do we have any other business to address tonight and what do we have upcoming for meetings?
We have no other business, but upcoming meetings, the next meeting would be April 9th. We have the mass road crossing site plan coming in for the condo, and we also have the solar arrays returning. And then, uh, on your sheet, it states McDonald's. McDonald's has been moved to April 23rd.
All right, so we do have planned business for both the April 9th and April 23rd, um, meetings.
Correct. The deadline for April 23rd has not, um, happened yet, so I don't know if we'll get any new business in or not.
Okay. All right, does anybody have anything else that they want to bring before the board tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess I have to roll call this, too, so. Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your cooperation in running the meeting like this. We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.